Welcome, everyone. I would like to call this committee of the whole meeting on Tuesday, May 7th at 4:00 PM to order. May we have roll call, please?
Banada.
Present.
Grantee.
Here.
Name it.
Here.
Mallett.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Foyer.
Present.
Begin.
Here.
Form present.
Thank you. Would please rise for the pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, is there any changes to our agenda? Seeing none, any approval of the agenda?
Motion approved.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Posting none, motion carries. Motion for the minutes of 4:22.
So.
Part.
Is there any questions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Posting none, motion carries. At this time, it's for public input. Is there anyone wishing to address this committee? Please come forward. Go once. Go on twice. Public input is closed. Okay, next, petitions and communications. We have a presentation by Katie Ball, Prevention Specialist Lead, McLaren Prevention Services, regarding the opioid misuse prevention.
Yes. Thank you so much, you guys, for having me. Again, my name is Katie Ball. I'm the Prevention Specialist Lead for McLaren Prevention Services, and I'm also the coordinator for the Bay County Prevention Network. And today, I'm here. I cringed a little bit when I heard prevention being talked about last week, and I was like, I need to come clear some things up. So here I am. Let me... Okay, so why prevention is important, why it should be on everyone's radar, is because delaying the age of first use dramatically decreases somebody's chances for having, developing a substance use disorder later in life. What data tells us is that nine out of 10, or 90% of people with a substance use disorder, started before the age of 18. And if we look at individuals starting before the age of 15, they're 650% more likely to develop a substance use disorder if they start before the age of 15 compared to the age of 21. It's a huge number. And if you're not a data person, you're a dollar person, every dollar spent on substance use disorder prevention is, it saves us $18 on treatment and medical expenses.
Question.
Mm-hmm.
So what age, what age should we start getting out to the kids and start talking to them?
I'll get into that. So we go all the way, we go all the way into the kindergarten classrooms, but I also work with, like, we partnered with the Health Department on, they had gotten a marijuana, a grant to help educate people, so when they're using during pregnancy. So we're all the way in the womb. We don't want substances touching the baby brain. So prevention goes all the way there, and I'll explain more. What prevention is not? Dare. Let's not talk about the dare program anymore. We know it was a fail, we're sorry. It was 30 years ago. I wasn't born, or I was born, but, but not for long. What prevention is? I would love to tell you that I'm going to be able to just give you a definition on this slide, but it's way too much for one slide. So, I have this continuum of care to help explain it. You can see that there's promotion, prevention, treatment, and recovery. This is what we look, look at in our field, and prevention is the promotion and prevention half. And we trickle into the other side a little bit, and I'll talk about that, too. Promotion. So promotion, when we're talking about this, is educating and advocating for community change in environments that help promote healthy, drug-free lifestyles. So if you think about, if you're going to a pond and you find a frog, and this frog is sick, so you take the frog out, you take him home, and you get him better, and you take him back to the pond, and while you're there about to release him, you notice there's another sick frog. So you're going to grab that sick frog, put your healthy one back, grab the new sick frog, take him back, make him healthy, go back to the pond, and by golly, there's another sick frog, and his, and your other frog is now sick again, too. So you take them both out, get them healthy, bring everyone back to the pond, and you notice there's another sick frog in there. Well, something that we're failing to do is treat the pond. If we can keep on throwing people, or fixing people or frogs, and putting them back into the same environment, but ultimately, we're going to keep repeating the same behaviors if the environment's not changed. So environmental change, ways that we do that. We want to reduce risk factors in the community and increase the protective factors in the community. And that might be through talking to policymakers such as yourselves. It could be meeting with schools. I just had a meeting recently with a school policymaker so that we can get our Too Good for Drugs program into more classrooms. And it can also be just through working with coalitions. So we're on 20-plus coalitions just working to help create positive community change, whether it be at the local level, the state level, or the national level. All right, so back to that continuum of care. We just, we have only covered promotion, and then we have prevention. Now, some miscommunication is between the medical world and the substance use disorder field. When we talk about primary prevention and substance use disorder, we consider that just universal prevention, whereas when we talk about usually diseases and illnesses, it would cover, all three preventions would cover this whole spectrum, but the, but not necessarily in substance use disorder. So universal is primary prevention. Secondary, my Y went over, is selective prevention, and then tertiary is indicated. And what that means, universal prevention, that's general population prevention. That means I'm going into a classroom, there's no reason to believe anyone is or isn't using, I'm going to do skill building and some education. I'm not targeting anyone, I'm not, we're just, we're working with the general population. And it could also be through media campaigns or community events, or, or anything like that. One way that we do that, you asked earlier, what age do we start? I like to start all the way in the womb, I don't want mom using anything in baby's brain, but for this program or for universal prevention, we are trying to start as early as kindergarten, so that we can, and what that looks like for every grade between K and 12 is talking about goals. How do you set goals? Making good decisions, identifying and managing your emotions, effective communication, bonding and relationships. Those are always the first five lessons, but at that, that education level. So, in the last meeting, I heard you guys talking about, is it okay to talk about drugs to kids, or are we just putting it in their heads? Well, this program, I kind of tried to highlight it, so we are talking about a substance with kindergarteners, but we're talking about medication safety, prescription safety. What that might look like at a kindergarten level? We've already talked about goals and making good decisions, so if they see mom left the cap off the vitamins, and I know them, them gummy vitamins are really good, but mom told me I'm not supposed to take more than one, and I don't want to get in trouble, or I don't want to get sick, so we help them develop those reasoning skills, and then we're going to put it into place by talking about medication safety or avoiding a harmful substance. But I'm not going to say, here's crack cocaine, don't ever use it, kindergartner. So it just looks different depending on the age. And then you can kind of see where we do start talking about other substances. So alcohol and nicotine is introduced at the third grade level, which is completely appropriate. I was just in a meeting where we talked about younger-than-third-grade kids bringing marijuana and vapes to school. So if we're not talking about it, if they're not educated to know, hey, we probably shouldn't be inhaling or eating things that we aren't supposed to, well, then more kids are going to end up using it. When it comes to middle and high school, we do start talking about alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs. We also talk to them about advertisers and how the job of an advertiser is strictly to get you to want to buy their product. They're not going to tell you bad things about their product, because then you're not going to buy it. And the kids get that, and we talk about different ways they try to. And we also educate them about what is substance use disorder? What does it mean to be dependent on a substance, so that they do have a better understanding? And I'll add, too, when we talk about these substances, we're always, I'm always reiterating that this is what happens to the developing brain. This is the developing brain, because what I don't ever want is somebody saying, well, you're saying my mom's a bad person because she does X, Y, Z. Nope. What I'm saying is your mom has a developed brain, and yours is not developed yet. So let's, let's wait, because the goal is always just delay that, the first use, and you're helping to prevent substance use disorder. Selective prevention, also known as secondary prevention or targeted prevention, that's when these kiddos, they are identified as being high risk, whether it be they're getting in trouble, or maybe they were abused, they have trauma, whatever it may be, that means we have these kids, we know there's a risk, hopefully we can identify what those risks are, and we're going to target them with some type of protective factor. So it might be something, some type of parent-child relationship is broken, we might be mending that, we might be helping to get mentors in that kiddo's life, or just positive extracurricular activities. And it could also be different education programs, or we have a program called Rainbow Days, and that's all about helping the kid build self-esteem. And then indicated prevention or targeted prevention, that's the individual who has started using, and we need to do an intervention with them. Some type of education that goes beyond the basics of this is what can happen. Typically, it's, it's educational, it's not, not anything to make anyone feel bad, it's to help them understand, this is what you might be doing, and this is what the consequences could be, what are some goals we can set to help you. But we also, if they're beyond just an intervention, we need to recommend them for screening for treatment, for Project Assert or Esper, whatever it may be, because we want to make sure that if they need treatment, if they're already dependent on a substance, that we can get them that help. And that's kind of where the indicated, the prevention and the treatment start to collide together. But harm reduction also falls all along this continuum, including in prevention, and that's just reducing and preventing death, injury, overdose, and substance misuse however we can, whether that be with Narcan, CPR, masks, education, STI tests, wound care strips, Sharps containers, so that we don't have Sharps out in our community on the ground, whatever it may be to help reduce the risk of death or injury, that's harm reduction. Prevention and recovery, we overlap when it comes to the environment, because a recovery-focused lifestyle is also the same type of environment that us prevention specialists are looking for. If it's promoting healthy, safe, drug-free activity, it helps prevention and recovery. So that's where that continuum starts to carry on over. And then where we differ, the prevention specialists go in the schools and teach evidence-based interventions. I am only allowed through my funder to teach evidence-based programs. The programs that I teach have to have scientific evidence that they reduce the risk of substance use. Whereas recovery coaches are trained to work with, they're individuals who are seeking some type of recovery, whatever that might look like for that individual. Why prevention is important to me? These kiddos, along with other kiddos in Bay County, these are our teens advocating prevention, it's very important to them. A handful of kids up there, the majority of them have had some type of trauma in their life from substance use. A handful of them don't get to see one of their parents, one or both of their parents because of substance use. So they're very, very passionate about this. You can see my little skunks in the corner, they are educating first graders, doing a skit called Samantha Skunk Smoking Stinks, where she tries a cigarette and turns green. The first graders love it, but the really cool thing is, even though the teens are very passionate and wanting to help the first graders, the evidence is actually that it helps the teenagers not to use. So it's, it's just great. And above that, that's some of our teens that went to Washington DC to go to a national conference and talk to some politicians in DC, some of our representatives, and that's them on the stairs getting ready to go talk to them. They're in the parade, and then the top left, they hosted a youth summit. And actually, this year, we left Washington DC, I said, you guys got three days, I need you to come up with presentations for our youth summit. Ready, go. And they did great. They did. I love them kiddos. Any questions? Yes.
So our politicians have legalized, well, they haven't legalized it yet, but they're working on legalizing marijuana.
Yeah.
So it's going to be a prescription, Schedule III, which, which, you know, Schedule I, nobody could write, Schedule III, just about everybody can write.
Mm-hmm.
So you foresee that as a problem?
I can tell you that any time a substance is more available, it increases youth use. It increases access, it increases youth use. Any time a substance is normalized, it increases youth use.
It's supposed to increase marijuana sales also, they say, because people will be using this.
I would say they're right. I'm sure it will. Which in turn, and we know that kids often want to do what their parents do, so the more adults that are using, the more kiddos we use, too.
Yes, yes, Jim.
Yeah, Katie, what age do you think you, you see the data shows them starting to use this at high school? Not, hopefully not prior to high school, but, you know, I do think one of the effective messages on tobacco use, which aside from the increase in cost, there's dramatically decreased cigarette and tobacco usage, is some of the dramatic photos and advertising and messaging on television and other social mediums to, you know, show some of the effects. You know, the cancer, the person with the deformed face, and for example, methamphetamine, which our sheriff has been fighting that, we're seeing it all over rural Michigan.
Right.
These people have labs and making this stuff, and you see how it destroys their, their physical even image, as well as their health and their mental capacity and their ability to work. Do you think that is effective as opposed to maybe kind of the lighthearted kind of approach where it's humorous or, you know, dressing up in costumes or whatever, but...
So I, it's a different, it depends on the age group. So what we've learned in prevention, scare tactics are actually a big no-no. It's a, it's not shown to change behaviors. That's why you no longer see the crashed car at the high school before prom, because scare tactics aren't shown to work, actually. And the programs that we're teaching, there is evidence that they work. So I would say that that soft-hearted approach is working. When it comes to smoking and stuff, the taxes were a big part of it, and that was a part of, that's as prevention people, that's something that we look at. Hey, if we raise taxes, it lowers use, and that ultimately is going to lower use for kids.
Thank you.
Yeah, one of our superintendents in our, in our culling, talked about vaping, and I guess that's really a popular thing.
I could tell you, Bay County, the last time they did the MiFi survey, which was 2019, right before COVID hit, we were the worst in the state for teen vaping and for alcohol use. Yeah.
Is there anyone else?
I don't know if you got the study from the Health Department? Were you able to get the study that was done by our Health Department?
Yes.
Okay. And I think peer-to-peer, it seems to be a lot of people, you know, like you said, the kids that have experienced it already, and even adult, peer-to-peer, seems to be a good, good way to...
Right. I'm trying to, because you were asking about the first age, and the MiFi survey actually says specifically for Bay County, what age kids initially use, and I can't think of that number off the top of my head. I know it's well be below 15. I, the number nine keeps popping up in my head.
I thought it was seventh, not seventh grade.
Oh, no, when I say nine, I mean nine years old.
Nine years old, third graders.
I'll look it up, I'll look it up and hold up the number while you guys are reading it, but I can't talk, just so that you know, because I definitely have that in my Google Docs.
Is there anyone else? Thank you, Katie.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Motion received.
Part.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posting none, motion carries. Bay County Sheriff, Homeland Security Grant for the year 2025, Operation Stone Garden Grant.
I'll move it.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posting none, motion carries. The Pinconning Area School Resource Officer Agreement for the year of 2024 and 2025.
So, support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posting none, motion carries. Bay City Public Schools Resource Officer Agreement for the year 2024, 2025.
So move.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posting none, motion carries. Banger Township and Banger Township Resource Officer Agreement for the year 2024 and 2025.
So move.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posting none, motion carries. The Burn Community Project Funding for the year 2024.
So move.
Support.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posting none, motion carries. The Bay City Prosecutor, Crime Victims Rights Grant Agreement for the 2024, 2025 year.
So move, or...
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'm trying to find my discussion here. Grant, okay, they've been receiving this since 1994. The monies come from defendants who have been convicted of a crime in the state of Michigan. Is the new legis, the new legislation going to affect that money? The money coming in, because, you know, we're still, the trial court thing is still going on, we used to still be getting that money from the defendants.
I haven't heard anything that would change the funding we get. When someone's convicted of a felony, it's $150 cost attributed to them for victims' rights. Misdemeanors is 75, and I believe juvenile is 25. And I haven't heard anything on the horizon that would be changing that.
Okay, because they're working on the state-level funding, the trial court, you know, because they can get the...
Well, I think ours is a little bit separate from the court. Ours is specific to prosecutor-based victim advocates.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Yes.
And this is for like $186,000 for two full-time employees?
Yes, actually, since I filed the request to put this on, I received my allocation letter, so we did get an increase of $1,765 towards salary, wages, and fringes.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posting none, motion carries. The Court Administrator, Grant Application Supporting Treatment Court Services.
So move.
Part.
Any discussion? Yes, Juan.
I would just point out, if anybody has a chance to go watch the graduation ceremonies when they have them, they, some, they graduate these people from the court, you know, it's a process they go through, and they have a graduation ceremony, so I might ask him to maybe let us know when there's a graduation ceremony from the treatment courts, are they still doing the graduations? Sort of interesting, because they sort of talk about what they've been through, the people that have been through the process, and so...
Yes, good.
Seems to be working for them.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posting none, motion carries. The 911 Central Dispatch, the I-PAW's MOU renewal for the 2024, 2027 year...
You skipped a... Probate court.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. The probate court, new position, juvenile court assessment coordinator for the PU-06.
So move.
Support.
Any discussion? Yes.
This is sort of unfunded mandate, but they did fund 75%, so we got part of it, and it looks like there's other monies maybe available to offset it, so there isn't any increase in the budget, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, they, they have a budget in 2024, a year, they also have some savings from redoing some of their contracts, so, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Posting none, motion carries. Now the 911 Central Dispatch, I-PAW's MOU renewal for the 2024 and 2027 year.
So move.
Support.
Any discussion, questions? Ryan, would you like to come up and just give us an overview on that?
So the, the I-PAW's memo is to allow us to continue to use what's known as Common Access Protocol, so essentially federal alerting notifications. So most are familiar with weather warnings, tornadoes, thunderstorms. Those are immediately sent by the National Weather Service, received by our RAVE or Bay Alerts notification system, and then disseminated to cell phones and other devices. They also integrate with television and radio, but primarily, most people are getting their warnings today through cell phones. So this allows us to continue to have those federal notifications, and there's, there's quite a few other possible notifications from federal agencies, but those are really the ones that we're concerned with and that we, we use most often.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Posting none, motion carries. The Director of Department of Aging, Letter of Intent to Region 7 AAA.
So.
Support.
Is there any discussion? I, I've got one. I see that we're going to be getting a $20,000 increase, Beth? Yes?
Before this year, they were going by the old census. Now they're in the 2020 census when giving the money out, according to the interstate formulary. So it kind of hurt everybody in the 10 counties. So you'll see a bunch of changes. I've already asked them to take some money out of congregate and put it into home-delivered, so that would make the budget a little more balanced for me with the grant, but at this moment, yeah, 20 is kind of a small increase.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Posting none, motion carries. The Animal Services, Temporary Part-Time Careless Tenant Position, June 1st to August 17th.
So move. Support.
Any discussions?
Millage position, right? Yeah, so there's no general fund money out of it. It's a busy, busy time of year, and you don't have your regular people that help out from new dimensions and...
That's right. Actually, currently, we get a few students, daytime and nighttime one, and the person will probably be moving up to a position for part-time, do a very good job there.
Yeah, thank you.
It's a busy year, hard year.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posting none, motion carries. Personnel Director, Juvenile Home, Full-Time Juvenile Youth Home Youth Development Worker, position higher to a two-year rate.
So move.
Part.
Is there any questions?
This is general fund money.
Okay.
I know Julie wants to talk about general fund money.
It is 50%...
Supported by the Child Care Fund.
Child Care Fund, okay.
Mm-hmm. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Julie. All in favor?
Aye.
Posting none, motion carries. The Finance, the Analysis of General Fund Equity 2024.
Motion received.
Part.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posting none, motion carries. The Update Regarding Executive Directive 2007-11.
Motion to receive.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posting none, motion carries. Payables, general.
So.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posting none, motion carries. Is there any referrals? Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? Amber, is there a need for close session?
Close session.
Is there any miscellaneous? That's Juan.
Since we have some time, I have some miscellaneous. So we had our MAC Conference Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday last week, some good, some good programs, and I'm going to report on the ones that I went to, and then other two commissioners maybe can report later on on their, on their findings. I went to the MAC Session Number Two on Monday, Empowering Michigan Families, MyLeaps Childcare Initiative. Childcare is a big issue. Lisa Brewer-Walraven, I asked her if she's related to anybody in Bay County, but she does have some relatives, I think she had lived in Bay County at one time, so she's with this MyLeap program. She was with the Department of Education before. She talked about how much, how much cost to the economy is because of people not being able to work because they don't have childcare, like 2.89 billion, and 576 million lost in taxes because people aren't working or paying, paying for childcare. They're working on expanding pre-K for all, for three- to four-year-olds. Kindergarten, and I didn't get the answer to this question, they're talking about mandatory kindergarten, I don't know if that's going through yet or not, but that's going to be a little pushback, it's mandatory, so before it was optional, but there is an app in Bay County, because I went to another session at Great Lakes Bay Regional Alliance about uh... session at Great Lakes Bay Regional Alliance about finding daycare. It's not just Bay County, but surrounding area about facilities that have possible openings. Makes it a little bit easier for people to search versus calling a lot of places. Family, talks about there's different, there's family childcare, there's family group homes, and then there's the, the regular state licensed facilities. And there's a lot of licensing requirements, trying to, trying to make it a little bit easier to, to get licensed. MyLeap is the new program that they have, there's 1.4 billion invested. There is also a TriShare program, which is a combination of the employer, the governmental unit, and the, and the person using the daycare. There's 59 counties that have TriShare. I'm not sure, do we have TriShare?
But we can't. We don't have the funding to come up with a third of our.
Third of it.
That was proposed by the Bay Area Community Foundation. All nonprofits would have free childcare. They ask us to be a partner, but it'd be very pricey.
And I know Michigan Works has some funds for childcare, because we've talked about that before, for people job-seeking, that they have some funding available for people to do, do some job searching. Want to cut, rotate bonuses for care workers, childcare scholarships to parents, to, to help them out with childcare. There's regional planning grants available, apprenticeships are available for workers, child development associate training, so they'd have the certification. The challenges are, profits are slim for daycares, demand is hard to predict, and public funds are a small part of the total system. I know we talked about it here when we were doing our ARPA funds, and we sort of tried to give some of that money away, it didn't quite work out the way we wanted to, but, but the state has, in the budget, there's a 10% rate hike for, for childcare workers. Like I mentioned, they want to expand to all four-year-olds. So there's a definite push by the state, and I think federal too, to improve funding for that, so people can get some childcare, so they can go to work. We also had a session on, let's see, plenary session, we had remarks from the NACO President, Mary Jo McGuire, who's from Minnesota, talked about what's going on with NACO. We had a session on MEDC Resources for Business and Communities. Susan Proctor from MEDC, she talked about site selection. She has been involved in site selection. Factors are shovel-ready, talent, and housing. Housing, the new one they've added to that recently. So shovel-ready, we've talked about that before, having, having the places ready to go when people come in and look at it, having the talent available, and housing, having housing available, which has been more of a problem lately. Proactive site readiness, there are some grants, I know, I know we got some for the, the tech park area, there was a grant that they got before to help develop the, to examine the site readiness. Purchase agreements, they talked about zoning, having zoning in place, and having an all-season route, and also being close to major highways was, was a factor in site selection. So we, we have I-75 and US-10, so we do have that. There are some rural counties that don't have that. And so MEDC is working hard, and we're working hard also, to have some sites available. We had a lunch with the keynote address from a, I think he was a Colonel or Commander, talking about.
Admiral.
Washington Lincoln Roosevelt Churchill, A Strategic Approach to Leading in Times of Crisis and Change. He sort of talked about the crisis that they all had, that they had a phase, and how, how they dealt with it, and got through the, the crisis. So hopefully, we learned something from, from his presentation. Pressy, Peter Pressy was the speaker. One more MAC Session was the Maximizing Your Company's Retirement Plans, was Ken Kelble and Eric Glinsky, they're from Nationwide Retirement Solutions. And I'll be taking this to our retirement board, but they have a new plan called Income America. I don't know if anybody has seen this one yet, it's a new, it's a new way to retire, it's sort of a, a combination of an annuity and a, and a 257, or whatever the other, other one, or 401K is. So, we'll probably be talking about it at the retirement board, if they haven't done it already, they may have talked about it already. We had a legislative reception on Tuesday, got to see our legislators, and talked to them about what they were doing, and what they weren't doing, and what we liked, and what we didn't like. So, twisted a few arms. We'll see if it did any good. So, that was about it.
Thank you, Val, for the reports. Anybody else? Okay. Any announcements? Yes?
Currently, we're emptying a shelter at the Bay County Animals Shelter. It started May 1st, it goes to the 15th. So, if anybody's looking for a dog or cat, best times right now, and $50 a dog, 25 for a cat. And we also are really excited to have a free vaccination clinic on May 18th, on Saturday. It's from 1:00 to 5:00. And last year, we did it for the first time ever, and it was just a great thing for over 400 people. We got free vaccinations for the dogs and cats. So it's a rabies shot or combo. So that's a big thing, it went off so great last year, we're doing it again. So May 18th, that is, for the free vaccination clinic. Keep up on our website for more details or call us.
Thank you, Matt. Matt, how many dogs do we have there?
Currently, right now?
Yes.
Probably the lowest we've been, we've been really doing a good job adopting dogs and cats. Cats, we're down to about three. We had about 100 this time last year, and we brought probably about 26 dogs.
Not bad.
So, we've been getting a lot of adoptions, it's been working out really great, and this is the best time to see them go out right now, so. But at the same time, knock on wood, they can come right in 10 tomorrow, so. Been doing really good cats, so.
Thank you, man.
Yep.
Motion received.
Support.
All in favor? Posting on motion carries.